The June 12, 2025, meeting of the Corvallis School Board is now called to order at 6:31 PM to support the health and safety of all community members, particularly those who are immunocompromised and their families. The Board continues to offer a virtual participation option for Board members and district staff. Public comment is available at select meetings, both in person and virtually. Details on how to provide public comment are available on the Corvallis School District website. Tonight's agenda, Board packet, and a link to District's YouTube channel can be found on the School Board page of the website. All public meetings are livestreamed on YouTube and recordings are typically posted the day, the following day. Tonight we have Sammy, Chris, Judah, Shawna, Bernie, and me in attendance in person, and Therese will be late. Uh, the first item on the agenda is acknowledgement of Pride Month.
Corvallis School District 509J, acknowledgement of Pride Month, resolution number 22-0501. Whereas the Corvallis School District recognizes and pays tribute to the significant contributions made in our community by LGBTQI2S+ people, and whereas the Corvallis School District affirms that LGBTQI2S+ students, families, staff, and community members should be valued for all aspects of their identities, and...
Whereas Pride Month grew out of efforts of the LGBTQI2S+ liberation movement in the 1970s, and whereas the LGBTQI2S+ liberation movement is widely recognized as growing out of activist efforts at the Los Angeles Cooper Donuts, uh, Do Not, yeah, Donuts, San Francisco Comptons Cafeteria, and New York Stonewall uprising in response to violence against LGBTQI2S+ people. And whereas one year after the Stonewall riots, organizers launched a gay pride month, or gay pride march in 1970, which continued annually, and...
Whereas LGBTQI2S+ people have been and continue to be targeted by acts of hate, and whereas LGBTQI2S+ people have historically been criminalized and institutionalized because of openly embracing their identities. And whereas LGBTQI2S+ people, and especially trans youth, continue to face targeted efforts that limit their ability to access healthcare, sports, and education that is identity-affirming. And whereas the community-based effort celebrating LGBTQI2S+ pride during the 1970s evolved to what is now known as Pride Month annually in order to celebrate LGBTQI2S+ identities?
Whereas Pride Month was first proclaimed nationally in 1994, and whereas Oregon has yet to proclaim Pride Month at the statewide level, and whereas LGBTQI2S+ people have contributed to the history and collective future of Corvallis and Benton County, Oregon, and whereas Pride Month provides an opportunity to continue the district's growth in learning about the many contributions of LGBTQI2S+ people to the nation, world, and local community, and...
Thank you, Judah. I appreciate that. Whereas education is a necessary component for creating a more equitable and anti-racist community, nation, and world. And whereas the Corvallis School District has made a commitment to equity and anti-racism, and whereas the Corvallis School District has a responsibility to honor and respect the diverse histories of our community, and...
Whereas the Corvallis School District believes each and every student must be celebrated and appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures, language, ideas, beliefs, values within a school community. Therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Corvallis School District does hereby proclaim June 2022, as well as each June annually, as Pride Month in the district, and strongly encourage students, families, staff, and community members to join in existing local celebrations. And encourage all schools in the district to help highlight this month in grade-appropriate ways, as well as highlight the contributions of all LGBTQI2S+ people to the local community, nation, and beyond, both historically and in current times. Adopted by the Board of Directors of School District Number 509J Corvallis of Benton and Lynn Counties, Oregon, at its regular meeting, uh, 5th day of May 2022.
Thanks, everyone. And again, um, we're gonna, we have another resolution, but as a reminder, we reread our resolutions to reaffirm the district's commitments, um, to what they contain. And, um, this month, the Pride Month proclamation feels a little bit more, um, salient given how it started with national violence, um, that I know people know about, um, in the communities. And so I appreciate that our district has made this affirmation, um, to the students, staff, and families. Um, the next item on the agenda is acknowledgement of Caribbean American Heritage Month.
Corvallis School District 509J, acknowledgements of Caribbean American Heritage Month, resolution number 24-0501. Whereas the Corvallis School District recognizes and pays tribute to the significant contributions made in our community by Caribbean Americans, which includes members of the indigenous, Black, Latinx, Latina communities, and reflects people directly from and with ancestry from all nations and lands in and around the Caribbean Sea.
Whereas the Corvallis School District affirms that students, families, staff, and community members should be valued for all, all aspects of their identities, and whereas Caribbean American Heritage Month grew out of a campaign led by Dr. Claire Nelson in 2004 to have June recognized as National Caribbean American Heritage Month, and whereas Caribbean Americans are largely left out of academic discourse, and...
Whereas Caribbean Americans have, have been and continue to be impacted by lasting impacts of colonialization, including violence, discrimination, and systemic barriers. And whereas June became recognized as Caribbean American Heritage Month nationally following Presidential Proclamation in 2006. And whereas Oregon has yet to officially recognize Caribbean American Heritage Month, and...
Whereas Caribbean Americans have contributed to the history and collective future of Corvallis and Benton County, Oregon. And whereas Caribbean American History Month provides an opportunity to continue the district's growth in learning about the many contributions of Caribbean Americans to the nation, world, and local community, and...
Whereas education is a necessary component for creating a more equitable and anti-racist community, nation, and world. And whereas the Corvallis School District has made a commitment to equity and anti-racism. And whereas the Corvallis School District has a responsibility to honor and respect the diverse histories of our community, and...
Whereas the Corvallis School District believes each and every student must be celebrated and appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures, language, ideas, beliefs, and values within a school community. Therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Corvallis School District that hereby proclaim June 2024, as well as each June annually, as Caribbean American Heritage Month in the district, and strongly encourage students, families, staff, and community members to join in existing local celebrations. And encourage all schools in the district to help highlight this month in grade-appropriate ways, as well as highlight the contributions of all Caribbean American peoples to the local community, nation, and beyond, both historically and in current times. Adopted by the Board of Directors of School District 509J Corvallis of Benton and Lynn Counties, Oregon, at its regular meeting this 9th day of May 2024.
Thanks, everyone, for helping reaffirm that one. That was our, um, not our latest one because we adopted another one this month, so appreciate that we keep adding recognitions as a district. Uh, the next item on the agenda is Board Member Reports. I'm sure people have stuff to report. We haven't met for a while in a business meeting anyways. Oh, my, I guess I can explain too.
I guess I'll, I'll start with the happy graduation, many graduations. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend CHS and College Hill and the 8th grade promotion ceremony at Bridges, and I saw many of my fellow Board members at all of these. And it was, um, it's just such a special treat to be able to be with the graduates and see them in this really special moment for them. So congratulations to all the graduates.
Um, well, besides all of the graduations and awards ceremonies and everything else, I want to highlight one event I, I attended, um, at the end of, uh, last month. It was, um, a speech and debate showcase by, uh, the, the Corvallis High School, as well as Crescent Valley High School's speech and debate teams. And this is their second year doing this, and I really encourage the community when they hear about, uh, this event to go. Because you, you would think, well, listening to speech and debate would be, uh, boring, but it's actually very entertaining, and, and the kids, uh, are just amazing. And I work at the School of Communication, and I think they can easily beat a lot of the college kids in the same area. So, thanks.
Um, yeah, I'd like to tag on to all the graduation ceremonies that we were able to attend. But I wanted to also point out a few things. Um, first of all, it was such an honor that we get to hand those diplomas. And, um, I had an extra honor of handing my granddaughter her diploma at CHS. But along with all the graduations and the celebrations, I just, I really noticed the hard work and, um, the hard stories that we heard. College Hill does this amazing job of telling stories about each kid. And it just, as I reflect, I just think back to those individual stories where kids have worked way beyond what we know about and have lived through what, you know, many hardships and different things, and just their resiliency and, um, the hardships that they have battled and trying to go to school and yet graduating. I just, you know, there's just so much more than just handing them that diploma, and I just really want to applaud, um, the staff at all the schools for all their hard work. And I also noticed, especially at the wings and life skills ceremonies, how many, um, alumni came back. And I just love the fact that they come back and they're, the teachers, you know, still, they still have that connection with teachers and staff. And so, and that just says a lot about our programs. Um, I also wanted to give a shout out, I believe, maybe Melissa, you can tell me right, what, if I'm right or wrong. Kathy Wright organized the, um, grad walks.
Along with Leah Tomlin.
Well, that alone is just an amazing, um, thing for, to watch. The seniors walk down their elementary school hallways and seeing teachers, and I was at Adams, um, and there were a lot of retired teachers that came to, to watch as well. There was just a lot of connect, connections and a lot of joy, and that was really fun. I just really want to commend those two people for organizing because it took a lot of organization, a lot of elementary schools and kids. So that was great. And then, um, again, as Judah said, the Bridges Promotion yesterday again was really touching and just all the hard work that those kids have done and that staff. And then, it's been a while, so I have one more, and I'm sorry about that. But, um, and I don't know a lot about the new bike safety program that is happening in our schools. But as I was subbing in different schools, I was, um, just kind of watching what was going on. And I understand now that PE teachers are organizing the bike safety program. And I know there's a lot of other work that's happening, I'm sure, from district staff. But I just, I just thought, wow, that's a, that was a lot of work to watch. You know, the setup, and every kid gets a bike and helmet, and, you know, they're learning great things, how to be safe on our streets. And so I just really want to say thank you to whoever and, and all the people that are putting a lot of time and effort to make sure our kids still have that bike safety program. So, thanks.
Well, I'll echo what many others have shared so far about graduations, um, being able to go and be a part of College Hill, Corvallis High School, Crescent Valley High School, the Bridges Promotion as well, and knowing that there were many other graduation ceremonies that were happening across the district were just such an incredible celebration of not just each and every student, but the communities that surround and support them. So really, it just felt like such an honor to be there and, and see and feel how deeply families and communities are there to support and uplift every student, as well as the educators and staff who clearly have these deep, meaningful relationships that really leave so many students feeling, feeling seen and valued and heard for who they are. So it really just felt like such an honor to be a part of that, to witness that, um, and, and to celebrate, not just the students, but the communities, staff, families, the educators who are part of supporting them too. Um, and as you said, Chris, it's been a while, so a couple of other quick things. The facilities planning meeting, community meeting, I think many of us, maybe all of us, were there along with other community members, other staff, um, starting to share out some information around facilities. So just wanted to thank folks who came to that, as well as the staff who've supported that, community members who are on that planning committee, and looking forward to continuing those conversations and learning more. Um, on that same evening, I rushed over to the orchestra concert, the high school orchestra concert, which was at CHS, but had joint orchestras playing. I'm just phenomenal musicianship happening across, um, high school music programs led by Sarah Perkins. Really appreciated that opportunity, and then also had the chance to be a part of and to listen to the Pops and Popsicle Concert at Sheldon Lynn Middle School, um, a little while back. And just seeing the incredible things happening across band, orchestra, choirs at the middle school level under leadership of Ms. Wells and Mr. Blake there. So, and seeing students honor them for the roles that they've played. So really appreciated all of those opportunities to really hear from, to be in community with students, and see the amazing things that they're doing.
So I want to really reflect on the sense of community that we just heard from many of the reports my colleagues have shared. I've been honored to hand those diplomas. Uh, this is my ninth graduation season, and I just heard from a colleague from Washington, she had three graduations, uh, two high schools, 600-plus students on the same day. So I'm not going to complain about a College Hill as a Crescent Valley at CHS. It's truly a joy to go from one school to another and see the pride in, uh, students. Some students go from, uh, their graduation to celebrate their peers, and, uh, I'm, I'm really truly humbled by the idea that our students now are more ready than any, uh, previous cohort to tackle the challenges of the future with more credits than ever before. And reflecting on the dual-emergent graduation celebration, seeing, I believe, 68, if I remember the number correctly, it's more than 60 graduates, reflecting an increase, uh, over the years. Um, and, and, and the point of pride is our students from Latino backgrounds, uh, more than a decade ago, they had a 50% chance to graduate. So not for the dual-language emergent and the commitment of our students and their families to support them to graduate, uh, one out of each two of those students who were on that stage probably could not have that chance and that opportunity. And their perseverance inspires me, the parent's support inspire me, and the school district's commitment to the dual-emergent program really inspires me toward what I'm hoping a goal sometime in 2030 or beyond, that's every student is bilingual from our school district. I hope that vision materialized one day. Uh, so I'm really inspired by all of these things. Uh, I'll add a few things that has not been reported. I was, uh, honored to do, for the second year in, uh, in, in a row, uh, volunteer for a fundraiser for the PTA at Lincoln, and that's a shout-out for all schools to ask us to join in, and, uh, we'll go, uh, and volunteer our time and, and efforts, or even in Lincoln School, uh, be willing to be dunked into the water. Uh, so I volunteered for 15 minutes, and there, there might be another School Board member who was volun, volunteered as well, uh, and joined me as well. Uh, it was really, really, uh, great experience. I want to, uh, conclude, uh, the comments for, uh, one thing that's, as you know, over the year, I go into conferences to represent Oregon and the Corvallis School District, and I try to bring in as many lessons learned or opportunities for grants. And I'm excited about one of Oregon districts receiving a grant, and they will be announced on Monday uh, for the, uh, uh, for the air quality, it's not Corvallis. Uh, but what I want to share is something I brought, physical I brought with me is an organization called Seedlings Braille Books for Children. And, uh, these are two samples about numbers, and they have texture in Braille language and in English and Spanish. And also, uh, another book here, Mi Amor Por Ti, My Love for You. Uh, and, uh, it speaks about, uh, numbers and animals and the love for animals. Uh, and it's also in Braille and in English and Spanish. Uh, and if you, uh, reach out to the organization, they will provide high-quality, free and low-cost Braille books for children with, uh, vision loss anywhere in the nation. So I hope this opportunity, uh, provides access to our students. And I will defer to, uh, the assistant superintendent, uh, Harder, and her team to decide, uh, shall those books be, uh, uh, contributed to a library or a student who will benefit from it? Uh, I will continue with, uh, Brandon Farstein, a book, a kid's book about self-love. Uh, I might have quoted him, uh, when I was, uh, sharing a report, uh, about, so, one of his engagements with National School Board Association. And the quote that still resonates with me, when he, uh, reminded School Board members, diversity is not a choice, inclusion is. So that's the book from Brandon Farstein, and he did, uh, sign it to Corvallis children, always remember, you are enough. So I would like to share this as well, uh, for our Corvallis Schools libraries, uh, and, and for our, uh, staff to decide, uh, which, uh, school, uh, school would receive that. And also celebrate the genius and joy of every student in your classroom. And, uh, last but not least, and I, I have more, uh, books that I will be sharing for us to read, uh, is, uh, Same But Different, Teen Life on the Autism Express. So that's a book that I would like to share with my colleagues as a, a suggested reading. And toward the end of the, uh, the meeting, I will share some other suggested readings for us as a summer reading. Uh, but I want to start and conclude with this one, and maybe after we finish it, we can hand it off to the library as well.
Thank you for those books. Um, they, as Lou pointed out, are now in three languages, and that's amazing. So thank you for that. We'll make sure that, um, I work with Amy to get them into the right libraries. Thank you.
I'll have to look at that one later, since it's my turn now. Um, I know we're a little bit over on our time for this, um, part of the report, but, um, again, we have not had a business meeting for quite some time. Um, so I did want to also say, um, that I was able to go to the long-range planning update. And what I wanted to say about that is I really appreciate the comments we heard from community on how important clarity is, um, and how we talk about topics, the words we use, so that they, that we might know what they're talking, what we're talking about, but it doesn't always impact the community in the ways we hope. So I just wanted to say I appreciated that, um, and also, um, I appreciate all the work that the Long Range Planning, um, Committee did to, uh, make that possible, that session. There's a lot of information there, and it was like, whoa. And so I'm looking forward to the report at the retreat, so we can continue to have these conversations as a community. We have a lot of work to do together in the upcoming year. Um, I also wanted to, um, let's see where I also, oh, Shawna, Therese, and I were able to meet with, uh, a group of students from CV. Was it for honors or AP project? Was it for honors or AP project? I think it was AP Government Project. So that was really awesome to hear their thoughts on, on the music program, on ideas around that. And so I just wanted to give a shout-out for those students for taking the time to meet with us as well. And then I also attended the Lincoln Festival. And this is, I actually got to fulfill not only one of my dreams, but my child's and some other students by being able to swap out with Sammy for a minute, because I hadn't signed up on time for a volunteer. And I actually got dunked by a couple of students. And it was a couple of middle school students at this point that used to go to Lincoln. And so I just wanted to say I appreciated the opportunity to also volunteer a little bit at, at the, at the event, as well as just hang out with and be in community. And I think that, that shows that love of the schools that students have, if they go back after they leave, to continue to be involved. And also the parents as well, with the neighborhood schools. So that's what makes those conversations that lie ahead even more challenging. But I did have fun being able to do that. So thank you, Sammy, for letting me swap in for you during your 15 minutes.
It was my pleasure.
No, Sammy did not dunk me. The kids, the kids get to. And then I did want to also say I was able to make it to a lot of the graduations as well. I did want to say, I'm sorry, I was not able to make it to the Bridges Life Skills and Dual Language celebrations due to work conflicts. And, but I was really thankful to be invited and glad that colleagues were able to attend. I also attended the Native Student Graduation with the Indian Education Program. So thank you, Marcie Anne, and everyone who helped plan that, the parent committee and other staff that helped with that. It was really a beautiful moment for everyone. And then College Hill, CHS and CV. And so this was actually the first time I got to go to CV's graduation. So I was really happy about that, because when you have kids that are also graduating high school at the other school, you tend to miss that one. And so that was, I was really happy about that. And plus, when I first started, we were in the pandemic, so there was no graduation. And I noticed on, along with all of the, all of the community and the celebrations, I noticed how many students had a little asterix on the program. And I didn't do the math, because I forgot to add them all up. But there was quite a few students that graduated with honors diplomas. And I was, I was pretty impressed by that, considering some of the values of the community around honors and AP. And so I did notice that there was a lot. And I just wanted to end by saying congratulations to all the graduates. I know some of them are going to trade school, some of them are going to community college, some of them are going to the military, some are going to the workforce, some are going to a four-year college, and some are going to just go straight to parenting. And all of those options, I think, are what works for every student and each student differently. And one of the good things about it is that CHS, or CHS, sorry, and CV, CSD is what I was trying to say. I looked at the words on my thing. That the district has helped prepare students for any of those choices to be able to move on to their next step in a really positive way. So I just wanted to say we're proud of you all, the graduates, and happy for the families and thankful for all the staff that helped get the students there. And with that, the next item on the agenda is the Oregon School Board Association and National School Board Association updates. I'm going to hand it over to Sammy.
May I just share one more thing I forgot, we forgot to mention. Thanks to the Bridges Program, they decided to honor the school board with a hazelnut tree, a tree known for its sustaining regenerative attributes. And I just want to say I'm really touched by it. And for my colleagues, please have a moment to go there and even invite other former school board members who planted those seeds for a tree that many kids now are going to be benefiting from. And with that, transitioning to the National School Board Association report. You have a report with lots of details that I would like to just highlight at a high level. There is a conference, the Council of Urban Boards of Education, usually it's on the East Coast. This time it's in LA, and it's happening from September 11th to 13th. So if this is affordable and possible for fellow school board members, it's a really great opportunity to discuss issues around equity. A presenter, including Brian Stevenson, will talk about how we can address the deep roots of inequality and encourage work to dismantle those inequality routes to prison and how education can contribute to it. Colin Kepernick will be also speaking there. In addition to that, there are so many grants, including the Go Green Initiative about addressing air quality and reducing emissions from buildings and schools. There is grants that are coming in related to high-quality math curriculum and educational educator professional development learning series. And as you see in your packet, there is updates. And I am trying to share with you on email, as well as frequent as possible, what's happening in the state and the national. Happy to answer any questions, but the high level of it, there is a bill in the Senate that's not only a budget bill, it's going to impact every school district, every community, including the dismantling of SNAP benefits as we know them and the support for schools receiving many of the funds from federal grants. So definitely reaching out to our members of Congress and sharing the impacts of how we receive those funds, Medicaid reimbursement that's helped us care for our students. These are really powerful stories that will enable and empower our representatives and senators to share how impactful it is. And I'm really hopeful to touch the hearts of every delegate in Washington DC to realize the impact on the kids that they serve in their communities as well. So sharing those stories, no matter how, how dedicated our representatives are, is really going to be crucial to build the human connection of the impact, the negative impact of the reconciliation bill that the Senate is deliberating right now. So there are some legislative updates on the state level, but happy to share them over email. Some of them are as new as today, related to the unemployment benefits for striking workers and how that could impact the budgets of every school district. So it is a conversation that we need to be aware of as we navigate in every school district, negotiations and bargaining and the financial impacts of them. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Sammy? Okay. With Oregon School Board Association, there was a board meeting last week. And I will say that the majority of the work happening with OSBA is around legislative advocacy in addition to their normal board development that they work on. And it always is surprising to me, like, how the long session overlaps with such a busy time for school board members to be able to advocate and especially around some of these key things. And so I just wanted to point that out, that the timing is not amazing for school board member involvement. And they do have calls for our call-outs to ways to stay engaged. So I would just continue to look for those from our Legislative Policy Committee representative. And if you have questions about that as our regional representative, I'm happy to answer them as well. Or if you need more information around the legislative actions that are happening. But that's, I would say that's been the majority of the work that's been happening, because there's so much of it going on. And besides internal stuff with an OSBA that is, we don't need to know about at this level, at this point. So, yeah. Any questions? Oh, I will add in that the special education bill is still on, right? It didn't, or did they, I didn't see the latest update, because they, we meet Fridays, and I've been having to work and I read the updates, but I missed this last one.
My understanding, it did not die, basically, but appropriation so far does not look promising in terms of appropriating funds for those bills.
Yeah, so it was, that's what I thought, it was still at that, where it's still, could happen, but then it would be unfunded for raising the, so it won't be as helpful as we thought, right?
Yes. That's being said, there's the, I forgot what they call it, nicknamed as Christmas Tree Bill. And also legislators may have last-minute priority bill that they can introduce. I think advocating for a special education is still in order, recognizing that we need, we need to make sure that the funds follow that. And the forecast is really grim in terms of any possible additional funds.
Yeah. So not as exciting as we would, we had hoped it would be with the special education bills, because they are absolutely needed to have been passed in a way that allows for funding for the school districts, not just passing something and asking for things to be reallocated. And which, as we know, makes things even harder in other areas in our districts with limited funding. So, okay. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and Melissa will be providing that this evening.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm happy to sit in for my superintendent and read to you what we have on the report. And we're going to honor tonight a lot of our retirees. So graduation and class of 2025 graduation was at the top of the list, but you covered all of them, I think. I think we got all of them. It was two weeks of celebration, so it was fantastic, and it was great to see all of you there. I want to name our 24, 25 retirees this year. And I am going in order of time with the district. So when we get to the end, we will hear the last two folks who have been with the district the longest. So tonight, we are celebrating Renee Pipitone from Bessie Coleman, Stephen Miguelles at Linus Pauling, BJ Raboon, who's finishing with us at the district office, Leslyn Vandemere at Bessie Coleman, Joyce Gorley, also at Bessie Coleman, Susanna Kumuro at Garfield, Michael Miller from the district office, Trudy Castor, who taught both at CV and CHS, Sheila Fowler from Crescent, Crescent Valley, Jennifer Rodriguez at Adams, Jane Kiechel from Corvallis High School, Rob Duval from Corvallis High School, Lisa Kraus, administrator from Linus Pauling, Viomy Wick-Raman Yaki, who finished at Corvallis High School, but actually spent a lot of her time at Garfield. And let's start with Viomy. She served in our district for 28 years. Next on the list is Brian Painter from Corvallis High School, who served in our district for 34 years, tied with Laura Davis, who's retiring from Adams, who also served our district for 34 years. So thank you for your service and your years of dedication to our students. We really appreciate all of your work. I wanted to make sure everyone knew that summer meals are on, and they start on June 23rd. More information about where summer meals can be found and what time is on our website. But just for the sake of being able to say it out loud, I'd like to list the schools and locations where families can find lunch. And that would be Catherine Jones Harrison Elementary, Letitia Carson Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, and Clements Primary School. We will also be serving lunches, lunches at Osborne Aquatic Center, OSU Kid Spirit, the Camus Commons, Adair Kitty Park. And if you want breakfast, that is also available at Lincoln and Osborne. We wanted to just, let's think about summer, that's more fun. But we do have to come back to work in August, most of you, and kids have to come back to school. So our building will return to work, our building staff returns to work the week of August 26th. We have all kinds of events happening for our staff that week. And on August 26th, we're going to have a building-based return and welcome. On August 27th, we do our big district rally. You're all invited, so we can recognize you. That is August 27th from 8:30 to 10:00 at Corvallis High School. And then we will finish that day out with, with training, fun training. And then our 2025 school year kicks off. On Tuesday, September 2nd, we have Orientation Day. That will look different for different schools, but it's focused mostly on our students transitioning. So kids coming into Kinder, kids coming into sixth, and kids going into ninth grade. And the first day of school for everyone is Wednesday, September 3rd. The note on kindergarten is that kindergarten teachers and our schools are doing some kind of different things at different places. So it's really important to check in with your school office manager to find out what kindergarten looks like for you at your elementary. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. And then next, nobody had any questions, right? Where did you go? Did you want to, did you want to?
Corvallis High School.
The question was where the rally was, and it's at Corvallis High School. Thank you. Don't forget, turn your mics on. The next item on the agenda is public hearing for public testimony on the 25-26 budget. Do we have any comments? Okay, we will not be opening that public hearing then. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 250601, Adopt Budget, Make Appropriations, Impose Property Taxes, and Categorize Taxes. Is there any discussion? I'm, it's, sure. Yeah, we could do both, right? If anybody's ready to make a motion, I will take that as well.
I move that Resolution Number 25-0601 be adopted to adopt the budget, make appropriations, impose property taxes, and categorize taxes for the 25-26 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Chris and seconded by Sammy. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Sammy.
First of all, I want to say another thank you for Lauren. Are you here in the room? Thank you, Lauren. Lauren, thank you, thank you. I really, really can't say thank you enough for the most transparent, most community-engaging, comprehensive budget process. It's been very inspirational to see how much we leaned in on how can we make sure we provide resources where they're needed the most. It goes, it's not, it's not news to anyone probably in this room or in the larger community, that the budget has been a huge topic of discussion in every community, neighborhood, in the district. And I really appreciate that leaning in. And with transparency comes discomfort. With limited resources comes the challenge. And I, I had this conversation so many times with folks when I hear about the discussion around equity, which is you got to give every student what they need, which is true on a good day. On a rainy day or on a tough day, you give students the resources where they need it, and you prioritize based on need. Those who need the help the most get the support the most. And that's true equity. That's equity on a tough day. It matters more, because we got to triage, we got to prioritize, and we need to do more with less. And I believe this year, we're doing more than last year in terms of outcomes. And it's very uncomfortable in terms of programming, absolutely, in terms of staffing. I'm going to give a sneak peek to the reading, the reading recommendations that I'm going to share with the community, which many of my fellow school board members already have, have had, which is by Nathan Levinson, Smarter Budgets, Smarter Schools. It's really the standard of how can you really do better in terms of budgeting as a year-long cycle, prioritize your budget to deliver student outcomes, and engage with community. I truly want to say, I think always hard into looking into this book, what can we do better in our budget process? And I can see us adopting more of the recommendations in this book over the years. So with that, I am supportive of this resolution, because I know it is the best budget, given the circumstances. And it is the most comprehensive way where we engage with the community. And the budget committee asks really tough questions, and the community asks tough questions, and they've been answered to us. So I just want to really lean in on the discomfort that we want to do more with more resources. The mandate's on us right now, we need to do more with less resources. And I believe this budget will get us there, but not only with the budget, but with the people on the ground, our teachers, school staff, administrators, and my colleagues on the school board. So with that, I am supportive of the resolution. I'll vote yes.
I, I said this at the last, at our budget committee meeting, that this budget cycle was absolutely excruciating. And, you know, being somebody, I disagree with some of the cuts that were made and kind of where they were cut, but also just to remind the community that the board doesn't have discretion about, you know, we just allocate funds to certain categories and where those, those funds are spent. And, you know, I've, I just want to let the community know, I've really taken into my heart all the people that came and talked. And... and heard every name of every teacher that was laid off when they were read out to us, that it's, that the changes in the district are very painful. But I'm hopeful that we as a district and as a board can embrace this opportunity to look at, while we're changing the district, how we can change things for better for all of our students as we're scaling down.
I'll just echo. I think you pulled up a good word in terms of excruciating. Judah, I was thinking, I was just going to say hard, I mean, but excruciating feels that a little bit more deeply. It's not a fun season or a fun time of year, and I want to just also thank all the community members who have come, including families, students, educators, and spoken about the budget, about concerns, about, come and shared their hopes, frustrations, and also disappointments with having a smaller budget and looking at doing less, doing as well as possible, but also having cuts to educators, to staff, to programs that really mean something to students, to families. I know to myself as well. And something that I've heard that I just want to elevate in those voices that I just have my own notes in front of me to make sure I don't forget what I'd like to be able to share is an ask from community members of really trying to figure out where their voices can actually make a difference in the process. When are decisions made across the year? If it feels like folks are coming here and then not seeing anything that's asked for, or some of the things asked for reflected in a vote by the board members. And so that ask for, you know, when are decisions being made? What does this process actually look like over the year, by whom? And then how do we improve that continually by transparency and with collaboration in different ways? And Lauren, there's been a lot of gratitude also from the community for you. I think this has been, at this phase of the budget process, the most transparent, the most generous in terms of, you know, you've offered yourself for community conversations, for budget meetings, for continual, hundreds and hundreds of questions and answers that came from the community, and you were right there answering every single one of them and really looking at how do we be as transparent as possible for the community? And so I just also want to thank you for that. And I know we've actually had community members write in and say, let Lauren know this gratitude, even if we don't feel great about the budget or there are things we're disappointed about or upset about in the budget. This process has been really helpful and meaningful. And a couple of other asks that I've heard from community members are more community conversations around the budget as well as other topics, to feel like we can have a back and forth rather than the one-way conversations that often come during school board meetings. A better understanding. I know that we also recognize this as a need with the community of a better understanding of the board's role as well as what are other roles and other folks involved in the budget process? When is that happening? All throughout the year? Because it does. And from what we know, the budget continues to change every single day, every single week moving forward. But also better understanding, what does that mean in the board's role of, well, we help set the district goals, and we approve the budget, and we help set the parameters, but we actually don't determine staffing. We actually don't determine what programs are funded. And that can be a hard place to be as a board member as well, when we hear the need, when we feel the need, when we also personally feel the impact of those cuts. So just really appreciate everybody and the care and thoughtfulness that's been brought. Really appreciate the community engagement and hope to continue finding ways to work together better as a community to make this a collaborative process and a transparent process, and a process where we're actually working together in every way that we can, rather than feeling like, as it does sometimes at board meetings, adversarial in terms of folks coming and saying, well, here's what we need, and not feeling like they're getting that back. And so looking at how do we continue to grow in that as a district, as board members, and across all the work that we do.
This was my first budget cycle as a board member, and I was very impressed, again, also Lauren, for your work and the transparency and the whole process itself. I'm going to echo a little bit along the themes of what Shauna put out. I think what we're looking at for this budget cycle is the beginning. It's not, to me, looking, reading the tea leaves, it's not going to get better very soon. And this is really an opportunity for us, for our community, for our other community partners, the city government, the county government, the state government, as well as the public, to come together with unique ideas. And we need to start thinking out of the box because we are asked to do more with less. And sometimes doing the same thing as if we have all the resources is not going to work. And I really encourage us to go out as a board and to listen to the public. You know, I know there are restrictions on how we all can go and so on, but maybe we can find some unique ways to go and talk to the community and bring back their ideas. One thing I did see during this budget cycle were a lot of great ideas coming from the community. And there was a lot of passion from parents. And in fact, I've met parents who are so knowledgeable about some of these things that it was very impressive. But we really do need to reach out to them a little bit more because we have to work as a group, as a community, to address what is going to be coming down the line, so.
There is a reason why we are a board of seven, because I hear my colleagues, and I'm like, oh, I need to sit with something and share it. So I was waiting for a moment where I would share with you a communication from a student. And with permission from the parents, I will share the sentiment. That's what's shared with me. And I think this is the time probably appropriate for it, as I'm hearing how we're deliberating on the budget. So the parents reach out saying, my daughter has heard about the budget cuts and wrote a letter specifically about her music teacher. And I told her, it's good to send it to a person who she would want to. And she sent it to me and asked permission to send it with the board, probably sending it over email. Discretion can be made about FERPA. But the sentiment of their letter is, I go to this school, elementary school. The student identifies as a protected class, and their music teacher is a leading work around equity of a certain protected class. The student looks up to that educator, quotes, "He has made me feel safe" because of who I am. I hope he can teach next year. So I just want to sit with this human element and the impact on our students, not only the impact of the budget itself, but how we communicate about the budget and who it is impacting. So really, thank you for your work. And I want to thank the students and the parents, and I'll be sharing the letter with the rest of the board.
Okay, I have so many thoughts about the budget. It's kind of hard to, like, condense it down. I'll do my best because I don't want to take up too much time. It is, this is not an easy process at all as a board when we have, we're facing reductions from the state and when we are being asked to do a lot of things that are unfunded. That's why I keep saying that in my reports when I talk about state legislature and advocacy, things sound really great, and they are. And then when they don't come with the appropriate funding, it comes from somewhere else. And it's really frustrating as a board member. And we have to be able to keep our schools open at the same time. And sometimes with the decisions that are happening at the levels beyond anything that we have any control or say over, don't make sense to us. And so I appreciate that being pointed out. And sometimes we may not agree with them. And I would say this budget cycle has shown that, as well as last year's as well, and the year before, quite honestly. And that doesn't mean we don't care about everyone. When I see the FTE, that reduction, when it says FTE, I'm like, those are people. And I say this every year when we lose people. They are not just numbers. They have names, and they have families that are impacted. They work for our schools because they care about young people in our community, and they care about education and learning. And so I know it's just not a number. It's like a person that we lose when we see that. And I just feel really bad about that. And so I just wanted to be really open and honest with the community about how we're impacted as board members by the budget conversations too. And we hear from everybody. And we are not the building administrators that see how those classrooms need to be negotiated, and that's what makes it hard. So we may not agree with something, and we may not have the information to understand why that choice was made. So to me, that was more of a call of, we need to actually hear from them as well. And I know that that adds a weird dynamic because we're not, that's outside of our realm. We don't supervise people. But it's worth having a conversation of how decisions are made before it gets there, whether or not it's a detailed conversation. But I think that something needs to happen where we understand the decisions before we're hearing about the impact, if that makes sense. Because we hear about it when we hear about the impact. And, yeah, I will say that I am not supportive of what's in the budget of what we're losing and who we're losing. I'm supportive of keeping our schools operating, and I'm supportive of the work, the deep work that Lauren had to do along with the administrators beyond just Ryan and trying to figure this out. And it's just a really tough situation to be in. And so I did want to let people know that, that it's really hard. And a lot of the ideas that were coming in, I appreciate a lot of the thought that was put into them. And I would encourage community to ask what we're already doing because some of the ideas are things that are already happening, such as fundraising, such as investments, such as looking at what it might look like to have fewer schools or different boundaries. Those are all conversations already happening and work that's already being done. So I'd encourage community to ask about those things. That way, they can say, okay, if that's happening, what else can we do next? And not feel frustrated when we are like, we're already doing that. We're not trying to shut down ideas, and we're already doing that. And so I just would encourage community members, if they're wanting to think about budget ideas, to ask what's happening already. That way, they're not feeling frustrated with, but I thought this would work. And we're like, maybe it will in time, and it can't right now. The last thing I think I'll say about it, because again, I can't keep going on and on about the budget. I have very many feelings about it, is that there is, there's not an easy fix here at all. There's none. It doesn't exist. And if it did, we would do it. And this board is not just going along with a number or something presented to us. We put a lot of thought into it too. And I wish there was something that magically would appear that would help in the long term. And that's about all I will say, other than we hear you, and we know what we see on the paper is not what represents necessarily the heart of our community members and our staff and our students, so. But you do have a commitment that we'll keep trying as a board to find ways to help less of this happening and losing less things in the future, so. And I'm not just saying that either, Jill. But with that, since we have taken a lot of time talking, again, we're a chatty bunch this evening, apparently. Is there any further discussion? That was the last thing. Everybody got their chances. Oh, go ahead.
I just neglected to say thank you to the budget committee members who volunteered and spent countless hours along with us going through the budget, asking their questions, really helping bring more of that transparency to the community as well. And also want to name, I think as many of us are noting, things that we don't, quite honestly, just don't like and don't agree with about the budget, also that a lot of that came from really hard decisions that staff or district leaders had to make that I know also wasn't easy for them. So just want to acknowledge that, that hard and thoughtful work that went into trying to make the best of a really hard situation.
Thanks, Shauna. Again, I have so many more comments to make that I won't do because I let us keep going on the meeting. Okay, it has been moved by Chris and seconded by Sammy. That Resolution Number 250601 be adopted to adopt the budget, make appropriations, impose property taxes, and categorize taxes for the 2025-26 fiscal year. Sammy?
I vote aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Judah?
Aye.
Shauna?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
And I will do a reluctant aye. Motion passes. And what time is it? We're in a weird moment, just so, I'm looking at Kim right now because we have public comment noticed at 7:40, but it says approximate, and we're only eight minutes off. So I think we're okay to just... Right in the middle, or we can, the next thing is the CSD College Readiness Report. I think we're okay, just, we don't have any comments registered, so I think we're okay. Thanks for that moment to figuring it out, everyone. We'll go ahead and move on to the, since we have nobody signed up for public comment and folk are supposed to sign up before the meeting anyhow. We'll go ahead and move on to the CSD College Readiness Report with Nikki.
Thought I turned it on. It's on? Okay. Thanks, Kim, for getting that ready. So I'm here to talk to you about college readiness. I submitted a report that you were able to view, but tonight I have more data to share, just some data that I feel like I can talk a little bit more about than, that didn't necessarily need to go in the report with just kind of the straight facts. So I do want to make, is this working okay? Okay. The purpose is really to make the college readiness statistics for our district visible to you and also to the public. I feel like there are things being said in social media and out in the community that the quality of our education is declining, and we're not preparing kids for college and their futures. And our data really tells a different story. I got involved in a social media conversation where parents were questioning that. And I said, well, you know, let me look into it. And they actually said, we want to see this kind of data. And so that's exactly what I'm going to share with you tonight. So in the report, I included some AP participation and performance data. I'm going to share more information about that, just get into greater detail. Also, I have information about our dual credit courses that our students take. These are courses that are taught by teachers at our high schools where students get LBCC credit. I'll talk about SAT scores, ACT scores, post-secondary enrollment. And then I also have some youth truth, college and career readiness data to share with you all. So in every single measure, we are seeing improvements. Some of the data goes back three years, and some of the data goes back five years. It really depends on when, especially when it comes to assessment, when the most recent changes were made to the assessment. So if folks are like, why is there only three years? Because that's all there is available on our dashboard because of changes made to assessments. So first, I just want to create a clear picture of the courses that we offer. So we have many dual credit offerings in a variety of areas. Those are listed on the slide. And then we also have a long list of AP courses. The way our high school schedule is built, we, people always ask, like, how are we struggling to meet instructional minutes at the high school? Like, we're really just right at 990? It has to do with providing transportation between periods, between buildings, every single day. So that often means like 20, 30, or more instructional minutes that are lost because of transportation. And it is a lot, and it adds up. But because of declining enrollment, by offering classes at one school or the other, we're allowed to actually offer more. If we were to try to run classes at both schools, we would have much smaller class sizes. So this really is a benefit to our students, and the schedule allows us to have so many offerings. Next slide. So first is our AP data. I think this was in the report. Now, um, there was a community member that came to a board meeting earlier this year and talked about uh, the college readiness index in the US News and World Report, I think is what it was. And so I, you know, wrote that down. It was here and I was like, well, what is that all about and why is it low? Um, and this data actually helps to explain why it's low. So the dark blue bar tells us the total number of students. And then the blue bar tells us the total number of exams. And then the orange bar tells us AP scores. So you can see in all areas, we are increasing. We have more students taking tests. We have more tests being taken. And we also see an increase in their scores reflected by the orange trend line that you can see there. Um, the challenge or kind of the gap that we have in this area is that we don't, th- this reflects that we have a small number of students or a number of, not a small number, it's a big number, a number of students taking multiple assessments. That college readiness index report is just about how many or what percent of your twelfth grade students are taking the AP exam. So we have a number of students taking multiple exams. But what we need to do and kind of a gap we have is get more students to see themselves as capable learners who can engage in those rigorous AP classes. So that's really the gap and that's why that measure was low. And then we can go to the next one. Um, I know that there are also sometimes questions in our community about what we're doing in terms of STEM readiness. Um, there's a lot of conversations about math and science. So I pulled out just our AP um, counts and uh, performance for uh, our STEM exams. And so that includes calculus, computer science, physics, chemistry, biology, and environmental science. And so you can see the first bar is um, the number of students testing in those areas. And then you can see the percent of students earning a score of three or more on those exams. And again, you're seeing, you know, growth in, in most all of the areas. You, there is a slight decline there in the percent of students earning a score of three plus in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We also have a lot more students testing, over a hundred more students testing. And I still feel like we're maintaining really good results in that area. We also have a growing number of AP scholars. And, you know, I do need to point out, like, everything is going up. And the numbers, I think with declining enrollment will stay high. I think our students and our community really value these courses. Um, and so I see participation, you know, staying high. And I don't see any changes happening to the courses we're offering as long as students maintain their interest. So AP scholars, let me, um, I had to kind of look into, there are three different types of AP scholars. There are those who score three or higher on three or more AP exams. Those who, that's a AP scholar. There's AP scholars with honors. These have an average of a three point two five on all AP exams taken, um, with scores of three or higher on five or more of the exams. And then a national AP scholar has four or higher scores on eight or more exams over their time in high school. So this is a combination of all three types of scholars and those are, are growing and have recovered since COVID. And grown. And then this is our dual credit data. So the dark blue bar shows the number of students who are participating in dual credit. And then those are the number of college credits earned. So you can see our graduates are learning, earn, leaving our system with a lot of college credits earned for free already on their transcripts. And then I looked at math-specific dual credit course enrollment. So we offer um, Math one eleven, Math one twelve, Math two forty-three, and Math two fifty-one. Um, and then this year we added Math one oh five at both high schools as well. So we, and that was in order to make sure that all math pathways have an advanced course option, which um, our definition of advanced means dual credit, AP, or CTE course. So when our teachers reworked the, the math pathways at both high schools, that was like one of the the things they had to meet. You have to have an advanced credit option in any math pathway. And so we should continue to see this growing as well. And then here we have our SAT data. So here you can see the scores, the mean SAT score has declined slightly. We also have a lot more students testing. Um, in twenty twenty-three, only sixteen students um, took that, that was our like, the SAT data, I will say, is not the easiest to pull because there are so many test dates. So sometimes it's like one student tested this day and then two students tested this day. So really I went with the test that has the most students on a given day, um, because otherwise there's uh, it's just a lot of singletons. Um, so I looked at the big testing days. So in twenty twenty-three, only sixteen students uh, took the SAT on that larger testing day and then seventy-nine in twenty twenty-five. And you can see, yes, the scores have gone down. We also have significantly more students taking the SAT exam. And the math scores are, are kind of staying where they are. So I know there are concerns that like math education is declining. And so when we look at these students who are required to take the SAT exam for college entry, we are seeing that their, their scores are, are being, you know, maintained. And that's the orange bar. Okay, this one has a lot going on. I just am like, I know that there is a lot here, but I just, there were so many measures that people asked me to look at. Like, look at AP, look at SAT, look at ACT. Now, our ACT test takers, that number, that N is also pretty small with just a range of thirty-eight to fifty-two across those five years. Um, there are trend lines for all of these. And generally, like, the trend lines are pretty flat. Um, there is one that's decreasing and that is in the area of math modeling. And so, you know, that's something I discovered by looking at the data. And so that's something I have questions about as we go into next year and think about what work our math TOSA can be doing um, with our high school math teachers. So a lot of these other bars, if, I know it's, it is very small and hard to read. It's actually hard to read even on my paper. So we've got mean math scores up there. So, you know, ACT has many different measures, but I included math performance because I know it's an area people have questions about. So I have mean math scores. We have percent meant uh, in the preparing for higher math category, that's actually increasing. Integrating math essentials, that's for like solving different types of problems using different skills. And then that math modeling section, and that's the one area where we're seeing a slight decline. Here's our post-secondary enrollment data. So we have a declining post-secondary enrollment. As Dr. White Bear mentioned, we have students who pursue all kinds of different post-secondary pathways. Um, and some go to college. This includes two-year trade school and four-year colleges. There is a nationwide trend where less and less students are choosing that option for a variety of reasons. There is, uh, right now, the, the early prediction data says that it will increase for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, but we don't have that data in yet. So here the dark blue bar shows you the percent of students who are enrolling in some sort of post-secondary institution. I think what we can be really proud of is the persistence. So we have, um, you know, in twenty-two, twenty-three, that ninety percent of those students who enrolled stayed in for a second year. So when we talk about students being prepared for college, we know that if they have success in their first year, they're more likely to stay into their second year. And so we see that persistence into the second year increasing. And I think that's something our district can be proud of. Yeah.
Does that data include um, the formal apprentice programs that are available locally?
I don't believe that that does. That, that's like this national clearinghouse data. And I don't think that's one of the, I think it's just those three, trade, community, four-year.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, and then I also shared, um, this wasn't in the report, but I said I would share it with you tonight, our youth truth data. So career and college readiness is something we've really been working on in our high school advisor classes. Um, you can see that in two areas, we went up three percent. I, in every area, we went up three to seven percent. Um, our seven percent gain was on a particular question that we really focused on in advisor. But you can see there that um, students are saying that we're helping them to develop the skills and knowledge that they will need for college and that their school has helped them to understand the steps they need to go to college. Now, when you look at this, it's like, oh my gosh, thirty-seven, that's really low. I was just reviewing this data with some counselors earlier this week. It is higher than all, um, than all Oregon schools. So even though it feels low and we know now from this, like, we're growing and we've got work to do, we're still doing better than all other Oregon schools, um, average. So I identified in the report a lot of successes and gaps. So, you know, we have a lot of students taking exams. Their scores are improving. We have dual credit participation increasing. Their, the college entrance exam results are either flat or improving. We have really good results and a high number of students um, in STEM areas. We have students who are um, staying into their second year. And we're also seeing uh, improvements in our youth truth student experience data related to college and career. I think, um, we have like some SAT, ACT participation. That's not really, that it's still pretty low. And I don't know that we have a lot of control over that because some, just so many universities are no longer requiring those exams, right? So that, I, I, it's a gap, like, our dataset just isn't very big. Um, post-secondary enrollment, as I mentioned, that's declining. I think um, you're going to see in, I have an activity in the next, in that last column that I think is related to that. Um, and that has to do with how students can learn about like doing a return on investment um, on college in the new personal finance uh, class that is required for the class of twenty twenty-seven. Um, I mentioned the math modeling skills is something like I just kind of have a question about. I also mentioned, sorry, I'm going to back up one, AP participation. So again, we have a lot of students taking, you know, many tests, but we have to think about how to make sure that all students feel like they're ready for rigor uh, by their twelfth grade year and, and enrolling in those AP classes. And then um, the youth truth, college and career responses. I mentioned that those are low. Um, we are doing better than the rest of Oregon. We have one question in particular we're going to focus on next year. And that is um, students understanding the steps they need to get the career they want. We saw seven percent gain in students saying that they can match their interest to careers. But now it's like, okay, I found a match, but like, what do I do next? So that's our work ahead of us that we'll be focusing on um, enhancing the advisor lessons on in twenty-five, twenty-six. So you can see, we'll be working on the advisor lessons. Um, I continue to work on expanding and strengthening our advanced course offerings. So we have a good partnership with LBCC um, and trying to continually increase um, our dual credit options that we have. One, there's a few that I'm working that on in our CTE programs um, to hopefully bring on for the next year. And then there are some fa- uh, parents who have also reached out to me about some classes that are offered in other districts, but we're not doing it. There is, um, there does, the teacher needs to want to do it. I can't say like, you're doing this dual credit thing. So there has to be like, the teacher has to want to do it. LBCC has really worked with us to remove some of the barriers to that. Um, and so that's just, you know, kind of, I, I still have had conversations with students like, oh, I tried to do that a lot, or with teachers. And they're like, I tried to do that a long time ago and it's really hard. And I said, it's changed. Like, reach out to them and you'll find out. Because I do think our students benefit from um, going in with a lot of college credit and not having to pay so much for their post-secondary education. Um, I mentioned the financial literacy. And then lastly, just um, that, that last one, that's our big growth area, is helping them to see what they need to do next. Because they just don't know. They can be like, I want to do this, but even their first step can be a challenge. So. And that's all I have to share. And I have time for questions.
I'm sure we're going to have questions. Kim, do you want to go ahead and add some more time on here already, since we're way ahead? Yeah, thank you. Probably ten. Thank you.
Bernie has a. A quick question, um, actually more a comment, uh, being the dad of now a, a recent graduate and, and having gone through the whole uh, college application process and watching the AP uh, programs and his participation in it. Um, I know uh, for SAT and ACT, um, in almost all the colleges that we applied to, they said it's coming back. I think I keep on hearing twenty-eight, but there were some schools that already started implementing that. So I think it will be interesting to see those numbers uh, over the next couple of years. Uh, my question actually is uh, i- is kind of a little bit out there too. Do we collect data on scholarships received and so on? Use that as an indicator of uh, of quality?
I um, I think the schools collect that data. I don't have that like easily at my fingertips. This actually has to do with the conversation Melissa and I had earlier today is like, one of my challenges in my position is what data I do have um, easily accessible to me. And that one isn't one. I mean, I think it's one that the schools track, but it's one I can follow up on and say like, how are you tracking this? And how can I have access to that data? Um, it's just not something I have currently.
Yeah, I, I attended, you know, the awards ceremony for CV and watching all the kids standing up saying they had a scholarship of some sort. And I think that's a really good indication of success in their preparation for college. Uh, I think that data would be interesting to, to look at and study and track.
Yeah, thank you.
So uh, if I may ask, uh, my second question, I, I asked Kim to share a slide back for my second question, if that's okay. I'll ask you the first question first, which is, are we offering AP BC, uh, calculus BC?
So students um, forecast for calculus BC and, which means, so in the, in March, we ask students to do like kind of course selection, right? Um, and as you know, we have budget reductions. And so I, there weren't the number of students that we would run a class with. That's just the reality. It's like if twelve students forecast for a class, that's not enough to run it, given our, our budget. We're looking really at high school classes of thirty and more. Um, and a lot of these classes, I will say, I just sent an email to all of our high school staff uh, two days ago. And I said, here's what I think you need. And I had teachers in, I think, four or five different AP classes, like, I need ten more books, twenty-five more books, thirty-five more books. So we have more students taking, and they said, and it has to do with not book loss, it has to do with, we have more kids taking these classes. Um, but that is one where we don't have a lot of forecast. And so that is one where we can partner with LB and the students through um, expand, EOP, Expanded Options Program can take that course. So that's um, that's actually a requirement. Um, I think it's a state, it's, I can't remember what policy it's in. But it pretty much says, like, if you can't offer something at your high school, you have to work on ways to, to offer it. And so another way we can offer that is through LBCC and having students take the course there to earn that same credit.
And Nikki, uh, if someone takes it, I think calculus BC is integration, if I'm not mistaken, right? Uh, but whatever it is, uh, should I not have it, should, if I want to go to college and have a STEM career, is it important for me to have it before my twelfth grade or eleventh grade?
I think it depends on what college. I think, I think more and more, some colleges are saying, it's okay to slow down in math. So you really get those core concepts strongly and um, get into the calculus when you're in college. I believe, I mean, and, and some colleges are going that way. Now, not every college is going that way, but a lot are saying, it's okay to not have calc BC. You'll still get into college. And as we know, like, students are taking eight or more AP classes in our system. Um, there are plenty prepared for college and will have time to take those courses in college. As, um, including like as they become more focused on probably what their career actually will be.
Thank you, Nikki. And as, I hate to put my professional opinion here, I'm a school board member, but uh, anecdotally from teaching about four thousand students in their freshman year for computational uh, engineering, which requires a deep understanding of math, those who have slowed down, those who took their time to do more uh, math at a slower pace in their high school are actually much, at much better capacity to succeed in their first year. So I, I think that's very consistent. Now to my question.
I want to just like say, like, so my husband is also um, an engineer. And I like to talk with the young engineers at the company and, and talk about their math learning experience. And they've said exactly that too, like, wow, some of the things I felt like I really had to rush through in math because I thought, I'm going to be an engineer and I have to do this. They've said, I, I kind of had to go back and relearn because I went too fast to, to relearn in college the math I thought I learned in high school. And that's been an interesting perspective from multiple like young, um, new engineers to the field, working with my husband.
Thank you. And uh, the AP exam participation and performance, the one with blue, green, and orange, if we can look into that.
It's like slide five, or no? Yeah, I think it's around slide five.
Yeah. Um, no, let's go.
Go back. Yep, back, back. It's one of the first data slides. There we, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Apologies for the ones with uh, actual law degree, but I need to do some uh, examination here. I think you accidentally saw me in a very compelling way about math detracking and how math detracking is going to be so essential to make improvements on this graph. I'll get there with a few questions. If you can tell me true, false, or nuanced, and feel free to explain. Are you ready?
Okay.
The first thing is, overall, we're doing better over the years, true?
True. More students, more tests, better scores.
More students, more tests, better scores. Also, not only from this graph, but from what you shared, we're offering more AP opportunities and pathways than ever before.
Correct.
Okay. Community member was concerned about our score with uh, the. Community member was concerned about our score with the.
College readiness index.
College readiness index. Now I'm going to put a pin on is college readiness index what we should aspire to or not? But let's assume we need to aspire for that. What they're saying, the equity gap that we have here is the discrepancy between the blue total students taking those exams and the total exams. That's delta, the number of students who are not getting any AP or not three APs is the problem. And they're telling us, Corvallis, you need to do better.
Yeah, more 12th graders need to be taking AP classes and the corresponding exam. Yes, that's what, that's what the CRI is telling us, that's the gap.
And my understanding of our values, every student should have the opportunity to pursue a career and pursue math if they want to. And that's equity. And that's consistent with the same, well, same thing that the index is aspiring to, which is increase the blue.
Yes, increase the dark blue, right? So either you're going to see the dark blue and the light blue. Well, you want to see the dark blue continue to rise, but like if you were, if, if, let's say you were doing the best in terms of the CRI and this was just 12th grade data, this is not, this is for grades 10 through 12, because we don't have AP classes for ninth graders. Those two lines would really be equal. And, and I don't, we're not ever going to be there. I think we're always going to have students taking multiple exams. And that's great. We want students to take multiple AP classes and challenge themselves. But yeah, we need that blue, that dark blue line to continue to increase, which means we're serving more students in these AP classes.
Does detracking in the middle school help us get there?
That, that's what, that is the, you know, like, one of the reasons for the change is that we build those really strong mathematical skills, those foundational skills, so that students don't hit a wall. So if you think about, I have a fourth grader right now and I look at the math that he's learning. And I was invited in, ah, beginning of this year, beginning of last year. I don't, I don't know. It's, it was time, it was a time ago. And it was, I was invited into a high school math class. And they wanted to talk to me about this assessment they give. And they were talking with each other, these two teachers were collaborating and they just wanted me to observe their collaboration about how they talked about this assessment. And I will tell you, they were like leveling the questions. This is an easy question, this is a hard question. And some of those hard questions were fourth grade standards. I was like, no, my fourth grader can do this. And I think about when we detrack and students skip a whole year of learning because they're learning math fast, they miss really deeply understanding something like fractions. And fractions come up all through math. And so if you don't have a deep understanding, there is a point where you will hit a wall and be like, darn it, I cannot do math. And then you don't persist and take advanced courses.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We need to allow other board members some time too. Y'all are having a very fascinating conversation, but I think other folks, anybody else? Okay, maybe I just wanted to try. No, I always did want to make sure we had time for everyone. Nobody else has any others? Okay. I did want to point out, like, while that number is something we want to see more increased, the reality is that not all students want to take advanced classes and honors classes. And I think we need to honor those students as well and where they want to be academically. And I don't think you need those classes for some of the careers students are going into or their life choices that they will be making. And I think it's great that we have students that do have these opportunities. So I did want to make sure that students that are going into areas where you don't need that, don't feel like they have to, to feel successful in our schools. So I did want to mention that. And I noticed some of the classes on there had the Z next to it. I know what that means because I work at a public institute, institution of higher education. And so all the students who get those, take those classes that have the Z next to them means that they will apply to any public two-year or four-year college in Oregon. And so I think that's super awesome. And I just wanted to make sure people understood what the Z meant. And it is, that means any of them, not just, not just LB, not just OSU, but like literally any of the community colleges are four years.
And I, I know that, I want to just come back to math, like one of them is 105Z. And I know that there are some people are like, well, math 105, that's not this high level math. For many careers and for many folks, that's the only math that they need. And to get that out of the way before they even enter a program to me is a huge success.
Yep, it is. And then they can focus on some of the other like content area ones for their majors. Let's see, and there is the comment about the SAT. I've seen the number, but I do not believe the SATs are increasing in demand at public universities. I think that's a private school one, right? Iris, do you remember, is it public too? Okay, I don't remember seeing that yet. Good to know. Yeah, I just wanted to double check.
It's all over the place, yeah.
Yeah, it's all over, okay. Yeah, because that had gone away for a reason. And so I'm fascinated to see it coming back because it is, there's a ton of research about it being very biased and not predicting successful outcomes in higher education. And so that's where I'm like fascinated that there's a, I was excited when I seen it going away, but that's just me. I don't like standardized testing in general. And then, let's see, I wish we can see some of these numbers for college readiness that I know you don't have any control over this, but that are linked to things that are more like in humanities and arts and stuff like that, because those things all help people succeed in college as well. But we don't have a way to measure that. So I just wanted to make sure folk knew that that's why that's probably not there too.
Yeah, I actually just reached out to teachers this afternoon, I think. It's like the end of the year and I have a lot of the things, these like big ideas, projects I want to work on over the summer. And I was like, oh, I need teacher voice on this. And one is related to how we can increase career learning in all classes. And so I'll be reaching out to the, I don't know, 180 folks who volunteered at the Benton County Career Convention. Like, we want you to not just be involved on that day, but be involved in a variety of ways. Here's a bunch of ways you can, so that we really are thinking about all the different ways that students can be exposed to college and career paths in every single, you know, course, not just on this one day.
I've seen that the numbers have more than doubled since COVID for AP and dual credit. And I think that is amazing. Cause it's not like it just went up a little bit, it like more than doubled. And one of the things that I've heard a lot about in the community is that we're only posting numbers that make us look good or like there's some way to change the data. And I don't understand where that comment comes from. So I wanted to like, how do you acquire the data for like, in a way, it's just from their tests, right? Like they're.
Yeah, I just go in, I log into College Board to see SAT scores. I log in and AP scores. I log into the ACT like dashboard to get that data, the dual credit data I get directly from LBCC. And, and honestly, like, parents were asking this questions and I was like, you know, I haven't looked into that data like deeply. And I started pulling the reports and the folks that have offices around me will, will attest to. I kept like, wow, look at this, look at this. I mean, honestly, like it was better than I expected. I still really thought we were further behind in COVID recovery. Everything was surprising and really positive. And you know, like as a leader, the thing I question is like, can I, can we as a system like identify the actions we're doing that are causing these positive changes, right? Because I, I don't think they're random. I do think I can identify some really specific activities. But I, I would say, and everybody around me that was there when I was working on these reports was, it was all surprising and all really positive.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure people knew where that data comes from and everything. And you mentioned about the, the math class, the calculus BC not having, how many students was?
I thought, I can look back, I, I can't, this is a big range. It was like six, nine or 12. And I don't know why I'm on multiple of three, but I feel like it was that number, that forecast for the course. And so I had principals at both school like, well, if we have kids forecast for, what is the option? It's like, well, we have Expanded Options Program, which is a partnership with LBCC that allows students to take the course directly at LBCC at no cost.
Okay, so is that the long-term plan? Cause I think that's been one of the things that people are nervous about in the community is that like, both coupled with the enrollment decline and not as many students being able to fill those classes, that they're going to be gone forever. And so that's, is that the option pathway that we're going to be looking at?
For now, I think it's leveraging that partnership that we have with LBCC. And then the other, you know, strategy that we're using is offering like some courses only at one site and then transporting students between sites.
I just want to make sure there is that plan ahead of time. Thank you so much.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for Nikki? Thank you for your time and presenting some really awesome data.
Yeah, it was, it really, it truly was a surprise. I wasn't like trying to find something positive. I was like, wow, amazing, and this, and this. So maybe later I can talk about the strategies we've done that I think have changed that.
Awesome, thanks. I think at this time, since it's 8:07, we could take a short break. So if we can take a short break, that'd be awesome. Thank you. That got skipped, I'm sorry.
The superintendent's twenty twenty-five to twenty-eight employment contract for Ryan Nos.
Yeah, I just needed to say superintendent, because you just said the contract. That way it's, yeah, superintendent, it's okay.
Still second with Chris.
Chris, okay. It has been moved by Bernie and seconded by Judah and Chris at the same time to approve the superintendent's contract as submitted. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Judah.
I'm very grateful for the positive working relationship with Mr. Nos and a director Nos.
Doctor.
Doctor Nos, Doctor Nos, he's a doctor, sorry, Doctor Nos. And even though, so he's not here, so I can compliment him. So, and I look forward to continuing to work with him.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I know I've said this before, but I just, I, there's so much that Dr. Nos does behind the scenes that I don't think people really realize with him, the, as much work as he does at the state level, advocating for all our kids, all the work he does to just really make sure that we support everyone in our district staff as well. And I just, with all that was said in the last few months, I just hope that Dr. Nos really knows how much we appreciate him and that we see him and we see all the amazing work he does twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days of the year. Well, maybe not three hundred sixty-five, but we know that he works a lot and very long hours and puts in a lot of his time into the kids in this district. And I really appreciate that, and I hope he knows that we appreciate that as well.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Shawna.
I'll echo what you just shared too, Chris, in terms of Ryan's dedication. I don't know that I ever go to any events in the community that I don't see Ryan there. He seems to be working around the clock continually. He responds to emails, texts, all times of day, all times of night, through the weekend, seems to be continually on the clock dedicating his whole self throughout the year to, to students, to educators, to this work. And it is often a thankless job and one that comes with a lot of just incredible dedication and care to be able to do it well, to do it at all. And I think Ryan really gives his whole self to it, something I really appreciate as well as that he's continually seeking out input and feedback. Something that I've heard him ask us, as I know myself as a board member individually, as well as I've, I've seen those conversations in the community. So I just really want to, want to acknowledge that.
Go ahead, Trace.
We've had a lot of public discussion in our community about the role of the superintendent in our district and some positive, some less than positive. But one thing that I just want to, as we, I hope approve this contract, I want to say that some of the feedback has indicated that the board doesn't have a, a reflective relationship with the superintendent, that we're just kind of here to say, yeah, whatever you want to do. And I just want to say personally as a board member that I have conversations with Ryan that as a, before I was a board member, I never imagined board members have those kinds of conversations, one-on-one with the superintendent, but I do have them. There is definitely not universal agreement all the time about every decision. But what there is, is a universal agreement that we're going to move through those challenging conversations respectfully. And that is something that I think our superintendent does very well with the board members. And he does very well with the community. And I really appreciate that. That's a skill set that I don't think we, I don't know if we could really grasp just how valuable that is to us. So, yeah, I have, I've learned a lot as a board member working with him, and I'm proud to support the work that he is doing. And I, I hope that we pass this, and then I hope that he accepts it and stays for the length of it.
Go ahead, Sammy.
Thank you Chair and co-vice chairs for sharing the contract that you have negotiated tentatively with the superintendent. I've had the pleasure of working with Ryan for probably the longest period. I've seen him through the pandemic, through ups and downs and through challenges. And also I've got to really meet superintendents across the state and the country. It is not usual to see a superintendent on snow days driving at four or five AM checking out the roads. Ryan does it. It's not usual that when it's uncomfortable and challenging, the superintendents lean in. And don't delegate that. They lean in and they make sure the best of the best are in the room, but also he's there in the room. I'm going to share something that we all know here in the room, but this is publicly facing. The way the relationship works, our bosses are the community. The community hold us accountable to their expectations. We translate those expectations to goals, to annual goals for the superintendent, annual goals for the district. They're pretty much identical. And then we have one employee, the superintendent. We hold him accountable to specific goals, milestones, mileposts. And no matter how he's steering the ship east or north or west, or slows down, or puts the sails up, have different team, whatever he does, our North Star is our goals. And we hold him accountable on our progress to the, to those North Stars that we have, and we set on behalf of the community. And by that, their continued, their relationship continues where staff are being held accountable by the superintendent. And he manages the day-to-day work. It is really challenging for any individual, any parents, or any employee, or any individual board member to have feelings about what's the best thing about something we know something about or we care most about. But for the superintendent, their mandate is the North Star. And to really balance between competing objectives, whether it is programs, or it is five or six goals that we set for the superintendent, it is really challenging. And with that discomfort, I want us to realize sometimes we will do well in one dimension, not well in the other dimension. And this board during its evaluation process with the superintendent puts all of that on the scale and say, you're doing well with what we agreed on, and we understand why you're doing well and you progress much more. You put much more effort in one dimension over the other. So just want to summarize the relationship that we take for granted, but frankly, it is not something that people process all the time or school boards process all the time. And I want to really elevate that to this milestone now. Once a year, or once every three years, we have a negotiation of the contract. And we want to say, how can we proceed? And I'm supportive of this contract for multiple reasons. Number one, as my colleagues mentioned, our relationship with the superintendent is a relationship of accountability, transparency, oversight, and trust. And also mutual governance and shared governance with the community. Another point that was mentioned, in the past three months, I heard about the superintendent contract much more than I heard about the superintendent contract for the last seven years. And for many reasons, I wanted to lean in and answer any questions. And frankly, the conversations are three di, three types, I would say. The first type is someone heard something from an article or from a neighbor and they share it. And they think it is the truth. They're not willing to engage in any discussion around context, and they move on. And that's okay. And it's, honestly, it's a minority of the conversations. The majority of the conversations, we would have ten minutes discussion. And ten minutes is a lot on a topic, but it is really critical for this, where we go into detail, what is the market rate of superintendents? What does longevity of a superintendent mean for the school district? Did he pay off his salary by programs that are bringing federal money through partnership with the CCOs? Not only him, but his team as well. And did we increase the yield of what we're investing, not only in his contract, but in the school district, by having more graduates graduating that will have a lifetime of income, much more because they're graduating? All of that comes into the balance, into this conversation. And when we have this conversation for ten minutes, many people say, Sammy, I get it. Or when they see the comparators districts that we use for our teachers, and they see the other salaries, they say, we get it now. So really I want to lean in and say, I'm intentionally wanting to elevate all of these topics, the relationship, the accountability, and also how we vote on a contract. Because it's important, and this is the only employment contract that we vote on as a school board. We have one employee. And we do it in front of the public, which is really important. But also we need to really engage with the public with all of those dimensions. So I want to really thank community members who leaned in and shared their feedback. Some information that the community have heard is just plainly not accurate. This year, this is the first time we vote on superintendent Nos' contract. So there were no raises or no budgets that were voted on in the past year since the calendar year started. That's number one. Number two, we're voting on a contract that retains the equity formula, which is the cost of living increase is equal to the lowest COLA offered to any represented employee groups. I think when we introduced it in, earlier in, in the twenty twenty-one or twenty-two, I can't remember. It was the first time we introduce, it's been introduced to any superintendent in Oregon. And I believe now, I know of two executives that have that in their formulas. Now, the conversation needs to continue in terms of community, hold us accountable, not only on this vote that we believe is the best vote for our superintendent to continue doing this work. On this, in the context of the goals and the expectations that you set for us every year. Are we progressing? And are we progressing at the rate that's satisfactory? What can we do better? And in this process, are we providing feedback? And is the superintendent providing us feedback to make the right progress? And I believe we are, and based on that, I'm voting yes.
Thanks, Sammy. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say, I share a lot of the same thoughts that have already been expressed around Brian's work. I actually have that written down as well about him getting up really early in the morning to make sure the roads are safe for staff and students and families and make those calls. I don't like getting up early, so I appreciate that he does and does that for everyone. I did want to mention that supporting our superintendent doesn't mean that we don't have work to do as a district. And the board is fully aware of the areas that we need to continue to work on. And I strongly believe that Ryan knows that too, as our superintendent. It's been mentioned that he's the only staff that we supervise and oversee. I always like to remind people when they come to me with those questions about the perceived lack of accountability, that because he is our employee, it's inappropriate to have those conversations in this room, in the public. And I would remind people to remember how they would like to be talked about if something that they were doing may not have been where they hoped it would be. And in those conversations that I've been in with Ryan, he's always really taken it to heart and worked on things. When concerns are brought to him, like what is going on with this? And I really appreciate that he does that because he could easily be like, yeah, sure, okay, and then moving on, and he doesn't. He puts a lot of deep thought into it. And he is always up for the challenge, it seems like. I know early on, when I was a board member, it was my first year, it was a little bit of a wild year because of the pandemic started. And there was also the racial justice movement that started, and a lot of school districts were saying, we're going to sign this Black Lives Matter document and say we're anti-racist school district. And I was like, whoa, whoa, whoa. I was like, Ryan, if you're going to do that, I want to tell you right now that I'm going to ask you to actually do that work. I can't be on a board that says that we're supporting anti-racist school district and we don't do that work. And he has continued to show that he's committed to that, that it's not just words on a paper, that he wants to make sure that students from all backgrounds and all lives and all, and all identities That he wants to make sure that students from all backgrounds and all lives and all um and all identities are supported in the schools. And you can see that reflected in our youth truth data. You can see the areas where we need to continue to improve based on that. Um and I just still believe that he does an amazing job in leaning into that challenge from five years ago. Um and so I appreciate that. It I don't think it's good to tear somebody down because um they because of perceived um income inequities when um he's worked his way to where he is and really stepped into all those ways that the system is set up to become a superintendent. And also to um support staff along the way so they can continue to grow as well. Um and so I just wanted to share a couple of things about that. In understanding that we know what work there is to do. Um we've seen the work that Ryan does and um it was really interesting helping negotiate his contract as well. And I wanted to say thank you to um Shawna and Therese for helping with that as well. Um and that he um has continued to move numbers up in our district. We just had a great report on that. And it was really good timing for that. Um and he's also increased access to students who really need it. And I think about the uh free meals for students. Think about the summer school programs. I think about all these positive impacts he's had in our district that from the vantage point of serving on OSBA's board and working in our region that not all school districts have. Even within our three county region. I feel like we're very fortunate um with his leadership and with Melissa's support of his leadership as well to um continue to do the work for the students that we do. And so that is my, I'm very chatty this evening. Um comments on Dr. Ryan Nasa's employment contract that I am in support of. And with that, I will go ahead and call for a vote. It has been moved by Bernie and seconded by Judah and Chris to approve the superintendent's contract as submitted. Sammy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Judah?
Aye.
Shawna?
Aye.
Therese?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Now we are on consolidated action. I was ready to talk about something, obviously, on that one. As a reminder, the items under this portion, the agenda are for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in consolidated action? Were you raising your hand? I was gonna raise my hand for the um the board's schedule, meeting schedule. Sorry. And then the um hazing harassment, the policy J F C F, which I also need to pull up again. Was there, do you have another one?
Yeah, I just have a question about the academic integrity.
Is that on the um oh IKI? Okay, and IKI. Any others?
Just quick comments and just to make it on the record for those who may have seen the agenda before today, uh election certification.
You want to pull that one?
Just a comment about it.
So you want to pull that one?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, you have to pull it to do that. Um so which one was it again? Sorry. The first one, election results? Okay. Um any others? Okay, let's go down from A down. So um go ahead, Sammy.
So of course, I'm not going to object to anything on it. And I I take it really with a serious note. Uh I said this about this agenda item in twenty twenty-one and I say it again. Uh taking uh the responsibility of certifying the election for whoever have prevailed in the election of this board of this body is a huge responsibility. Uh it's a responsibility that uh uh really upheld our constitutional republic in twenty twenty-one in Washington DC. And uh I think, I take it seriously and I want to acknowledge uh the uh investment that district puts in to uphold those elections. We pay for those elections, correct? And also the community participation, the voters who lean in and vote and make their voice heard. And uh board members and candidates uh who have engaged in the conversations that uh keeps this public uh institution accountable to the public, represented by the public, for the public. So uh just want to highlight that and uh thank Kim for running to the election office as of today, is that correct? To get the results. Uh thank you. And uh thanks for the voters for taking that responsibility and rights diligently.
Thanks Sammy. Um I pulled the meeting schedule. Um I always mean to bring this up and I remembered this year in way late. Um because our, one of our co-Vice Chairs um was at a middle school graduation. And I don't know if we can amend it and or if we have to pull it again because I really would like to see us. It's on a Thursday. We meet on Thursdays and it's probably overlapped with the middle school graduation. So the board never gets invited, probably because we can never go. And I'm not, I don't know if we discussed this before. I can't remember if we can meet like on a Tuesday that week or a Wednesday.
It's June eleventh.
Can you hand the mic over Bernie?
Um after this election cycle, which is every other year, I would suggest we move it back a week. I know that a lot of people want to leave for vacation, but we only got our certification today. Because the um elections office worked really hard to certify us especially. And so I would suggest we just make it a practice and have it one week.
Later?
Later.
Okay, maybe earlier in the week?
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
Can we amend this um schedule later this, like when we come back? Can we approve it and amend it for the June meeting? Because it would be nice to put it in practice instead of.
I need to send it out to schools they're asking because they're scheduling around it, so.
Right.
Yep.
It would, if we approve it with the intent to request a change for that week. Can you let them know that or would that mess it up?
Well, I, so school will be out that next week.
Oh, yeah, that's out. So it won't matter, right?
It won't matter.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that's my, that was my one request is if we can change it later so we can start being invited to the middle schools as well.
So we're talking about moving it one week later and then to Tuesday or one week later and then to Thursday?
It'd be nice if it was earlier because staff want to go on, they want to leave. And so for, is there stuff on Tuesdays or?
No, I was also saying that that'd be nice because the next day is Juneteenth and a lot of people are getting ready to celebrate.
Yeah, we do it around that.
And we want to not inter- interfere.
Yeah, exactly. Did you have something, Sammy, or? Yeah. I mean, that's like a, that would be like a major societal conflict, I would say, or school related one. It'd be nice though if we were not, yeah, okay.
So in looking at the schedule, uh eighth grade promotion always happens before the last day, the last scheduled day of the year. As it happens for this coming year, the last scheduled day is June eleventh. So the promotion would happen on a Wednesday. So we may be fine for promotion for next, this coming year, but what we want to be doing is, as we're forecasting schedules ahead, paying attention to when the last day of the school falls. So that we are um, we don't end up with a eighth grade promotion night being a Thursday when we're scheduled.
I agree. And I think we do need to move it to the next week just because of elections.
And those are every couple of years.
Practice if we can.
I don't have objection to moving it.
We can do it probably earlier. I have to look at the calendar.
Okay.
But I'll bring it back. I mean, if we can approve it tonight, I'll bring it back August, probably.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't have any objections to putting it forward. I just wanted to raise it because it's some, again, we don't get invited probably because we're not available. And we want to support our middle schoolers too. Yeah, I haven't been to one for a long time. Um the next one is um the policy J F C F. I was a little bit I don't know if anybody else has questions. I was a little bit confused on the comment to just refer to scope. On the um off-campus cyberbullying reference.
So we were, we had a long conversation in the last meeting about the connection of things harassment that happens off-campus and its connection to on-campus. And so um I put re- um to ensure further clarity, the cyberbullying definition was amended and in it, it says refer to the section in this policy titled scope so that if you are looking at cyberbullying, you can, you can connect it to that section and understand that cyberbullying is our scope if it is going to you know, in some way um create a situation at school. That was my, that was my hope.
I mean, technically it makes sense. I'm wondering if it'll make sense when somebody reads it, you know what I mean? Because the scope's big and they're like, because when you go back and read it, you're like, oh yeah, because it says this applies off-campus.
Yes. It can just be specific and say it does.
Or I don't know if if, I mean, when you read it and you say like, okay, let me go back to scope. It's in the second para- it's in the second paragraph. In the second paragraph, it says it's off-campus. Um but I'm wondering if that's just like, if people automatically get it or if it's clear enough. I may have, I may just be like, I just like it just to say it, you know, kind of person. But um if it makes sense and it does, it does go back, so I do know that, but yeah.
Yeah, I the li- the line right now as it reads is refer to the section in this policy titled scope to understand how harassing, intimidating, coercive or bullying off-campus electronic communications fall under the scope of this policy, but I can be more clear.
Yeah, I mean, it was just kind of a, I'm okay with it, but I just want to make sure, go ahead.
I have a comment on something. I I thought it was clear when I read it. Um but I also wanted to um take a moment to thank the community member that brought these changes to our attention. And just to note that somebody came in, made a comment, and here we are, we're changing this policy. Um and I think it's a wonderful change and I'm very grateful to that community member.
Yeah, same. Did you have something, senior on mute?
Um yeah, I just want to say probably I can see the intention of leaving it under scope. Because you can't really say off-campus without the qualifier, which is the entire paragraph. Otherwise, you may end up with the uh tinker, a Supreme Court to a caveat. Like the whole paragraph tries to really uh say this is the off-campus conduct that's not allowed. Anything beyond it does not apply. So yeah, I I think it will be really challenging to bring it back there unless you want to add the full paragraph again, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm okay with it as long as it helps prevent students from harassing other students from home on their devices, which is what's happening.
Yeah.
And so as long as it addresses that, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
And that was my main question, if it's gonna address that need.
Oh, well, absolutely.
Okay. Um next one is policy IKI.
Well, actually, I reread and I think I've answered my own question. But um I just wanted to make sure that that on this policy, there's reference to the use of AI. But also making sure that teachers have a prerogative to to allow students to use AI when it's appropriate and when it's cited correctly. And so it looks, I going back and reread, I think, yeah, it's done there.
That sentence about using artificial intelligence when not explicitly permitted by the instructor. And so I think that was what we were hoping there is if the instructor is allowing you to use AI, which a lot do um to do an assignment, um then you're fine. You're not um committing academic cheating. But if you were not supposed to be doing that, if they were explicit in that direction, then that's where the problem lies.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
Okay. Alrighty, we have discussed the items we pulled and then not everything is remaining in. Um does anyone wish to make a motion?
Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve consolidated action as presented.
As submitted.
As submitted.
Sir, a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Sammy and seconded by Therese. Any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved by Sammy and seconded by Therese to adopt consolidated action items as submitted. And um Sammy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Judah?
Aye.
Shawna?
Aye.
Therese?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consolidated information. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for discussion. Uh would anyone like to discuss an item in consolidated information? Alrighty, the next item on the agenda is to swear in newly elected board members affected um July first. Tonight, we will swear in bor- board members elected in the May twenty twenty-five special election to positions one, four, five and seven. I would like to invite co-Vice Chair Therese Jones to administer oath of office.
Thank you, Chair. Uh I would like to ask the candidates to move forward to um presenter uh mic number two and I will meet you right over there at number one. Okay, wonderful. Alright, gather. Oh. Okay, well, wait a second. Okay, we're waiting for the most important witness to make it into the room. Okay, ready? Alright, it uh is my privilege to administer the oath of office to our recently elected um or re-elected um board uh members for Corvallis School Board. Um the board chair or the superintendent or the co-Vice Chair in this case shall state the following before beginning the swearing-in pursuant to O R S three three two point zero zero five. Directors must take an oath of office before assuming their duties. So Lou, Shawna, Sammy and Bernie, please stand, raise your right hand and repeat after me. And you can all repeat at the same time. We don't have to do it individually. Okay. I, each of you say your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof. And the policies of the Corvallis School District. During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities. That's maybe too long. Of the office of school board member to the best of my ability. Congratulations, you are sworn in. A round of applause. Handshake? Do we have to do that first?
Uh the next item on the agenda is the election of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six officers effective July first, twenty twenty-five. And we do not need a motion, just names of people you would like to nominate for the positions of board chair for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
I would like to nominate Lou to serve as Chair for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Is there any other nominations?
I was gonna do the same.
Okay. Um I think I just say I would accept that nomination. Thank you. And then um I ca- I'm like slowly s- losing my place on this sheet. Um I do not have to say anything because there's not multiple people. Okay. So I would need to take a vote now. That's what I need to do. Yes. Sammy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Judah?
Aye.
Shawna?
Aye.
Therese?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye for myself, I suppose, for the um new chair or continuing chair effective July first, twenty twenty-five. Thank you all for your support. I think we have time to talk about that after we do these, so yeah. Um, then the next one, we do not need a motion, just the names of people we'd like to nominate for the position of board co-Vice Chair for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Does anyone wish to make a nomination?
I would like to make a nomination. I would like to nominate Dr. Tominy as one of the co-Vice Chairs and I didn't talk to Therese.
We're only, we do one at a time.
Dr. Tominy.
I accept the nomination, thank you.
So any other nominations? I would have also nominated Shawna. Um, okay. And is there any other nominations? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and take a vote then for Shawna, um, for co- or for Vice Chair. Sammy.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Judah.
Aye.
Shawna.
Aye.
Therese.
I turn myself off. Aye.
Bernie.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Congratulations Shawna for continuing your term as um, co-Vice Chair. And then um, we, our next position, we do not need to make a motion, just names of people you would like to nominate for the position of board co-Vice Chair for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Does anyone wish to make a motion? What was that? Nomination, I'm sorry, thank you. It's not a motion.
I would like to nominate Dr. Jones.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, would you accept that nomination?
I would, thank you.
And um, since there's no other nominations, I will take a vote for uh, Therese. Sammy.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Judah.
Aye.
Shawna.
Aye.
Therese.
Aye.
Bernie.
Aye.
And I vote aye, congratulations Therese for continuing your um, term as co-Vice Chair. This is a very interesting process because we don't have discussions, so it's a little bit thrown off from, throws me off. So thanks for your patience as I fumbled through.
And thank you to the Chair and co- co-Vice Chairs for their additional service to this.
Thank you. Um, it doesn't have on here that we can talk about the things, but I think it'd be nice if we said like, something about the positions. Um, about serving on them. That's true, it could be part of our board member, I'm gonna do board member. We'll, we'll make board member comments and we can include them there if you all would like to say anything about um, certifying your reali- or your serving again or serving as leadership, thank you. Okay, is there any board member comments? Yes.
I'd just like to, the community aware that here in Benton County, we're seeing an increase in overdose deaths. And you can receive training and naltrexone through Benton County to um, be aware and be alert and be ready to help save someone's life and that I've um, done the training and it's very, very simple, really fast and really easy to um, have the naltrexone, which is um, an overdose, um, opioid overdose reversal drug. Um, and it, it saves many lives in our communities, so I'd like people to be aware and to be ready to save a life.
The training is very easy.
It is so easy.
Please take the training. Yes. Chris?
Um, well, first of all, thank you to our leaders. Um, I I know that you spend a lot of time doing additional meetings and all kinds of things and uh, Lou, I know, I mean, all those emails that you respond to and you do it so well. I really appreciate that and so thank you for being willing to do it again. Um, I did have an idea and hopefully this is appropriate to throw it out here at this time, but you know, we've heard a lot about us trying to get more community involvement and feedback and that coming to board meetings is not always, you know, it's hard for us because we can't answer, we can't have dialogue. And I'm wondering if well, I, I guess I'd like to see that we have more of a, maybe a community liaison person that attends like, and I say this because I've been thinking about doing this myself, but attending some of the city council meetings and attending or hosting other meetings where we can just sit down and talk with people. You know, Sammy, you've done that quite a bit on your own. Um, but having that kind of person who's designated to like attend those kind of meetings. Um, and so I just kind of want to throw that out there and offer to, as the only retired person on here has a little more time that, you know, I'd be willing to do something like that.
Are you saying you would like to volunteer to attend things to represent?
Yeah, I, I, yes, I think that's one way I can step up as a board member and try to find different ways to have more conversations as well as attend some of our city meetings.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate that. Trying to think of how, how do we do that? To add.
I noticed on OSBA site that that is like one of the roles that they suggest as board members, so.
So we would, we would need to put it into our structure or can we just say?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be official, but.
Sammy is wanting, he really wants, just unmute the mic Sammy at this point.
So uh, yes, historically I can share, we did have, we still do have liaisons. For example, the Chair now is the de facto liaison to the foundation uh, board. Uh, for some time, we had designated PTA liaisons. And now we uh, invite PTAs to invite us and we respond accordingly. There was CAC and other committees that the superintendent has. Uh, we also have a designated person. Those committee appointments traditionally has been a decision of the Chair or leadership uh, where the Chair will appoint people, you may solicit people for uh, who's interested in those. So I would say it could be an informal one. Um, as long as, and I think we are, yeah, for lack of better words, we are a mature board where we understand our roles when we go into a city council or uh, anything like that, we have that understanding how we present ourselves as individual board members liaisons. So, long story short, I would say does not necessarily need to be enshrined in a policy or a board action, uh, because there's no actions being done on behalf of the board by that liaison.
Can we just add it to the list of, so Kim puts together the list of like where we're representing the board in those capacities, so we can just add this one on there, does that sound okay?
Yeah, and I'm glad you said PTA because that was the other thought I had was um, trying to attend more PTA meetings.
Yeah, I have some comments about that too later, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Chris. Any other board member comments? Go ahead, Bernie.
Yeah, uh, just um, uh, again, I want to reiterate and uh, also congratulate all the, the people who graduated and all moved up, uh, all the students. Uh, but now, and also concluding a good school year. Uh, we, we have summer coming up and I really encourage everybody to be safe. We want to see everybody come back uh, in the fall. I, I know, uh, this is a tradition I had uh, in the Navy because the summertime is when, when most of the accidents happen. So please uh, exercise good judgment, don't drink and drive and, and, and just um, um, be safe. We want to see you all back.
Thanks, Bernie. Other board member comments? Are you trying to go because your mic's unmuted, so. Okay, there we go, thanks.
Alright, so just wanted to make a final congratulations to, to graduates, to retirees as well in that transition to staff for another incredible school year of supporting students um, through that journey as well as their own journeys and really hoping that staff will also, in addition to being safe, everybody in the community, take some time to rest as you have it, because you really, it's very, very well deserved. So hoping that staff also are able to take some time, a little bit of time, um, as well as possible for their own rest and um, taking care of themselves. And then something that I'd forgotten to mention in board comments or in our comments earlier was um, one thing I did attend that Marcian reminded me of was the youth truth focus group with students um, a couple of weeks back. And it was just incredible to see students receiving the youth truth data from their schools and making action plans that they are actually in process of, or have been over the last week or so. Um, bringing back to leadership at their own schools with their own ideas for how to make meaning of that data and then steps that they could actually take together um, for the next school year. So just wanted to give a shout out to those students doing that work as well as staff supporting that work. And finally, just gratitude for um, the community for being able to continue this work as a co-Vice Chair as well as a school board member in general. And Chris, to your point too, I know that you'll probably mention this as well. I'm thinking about in the year ahead and the years ahead, an area that we've identified in the past year or the past two years as a board is really communication and community engagement. And continuing to think about what does that actually look like in practice in ways that the community is asking for. Um, and so PTAs as well as other stu- uh, parent leader groups is something else I was thinking about too in terms of both engaging more frequently as we're able to in meetings, but also thinking about would, would it make sense to have a say a quarterly um, parent and family leadership meeting where folks can come whether they're involved in PTAs, CAC and other groups that are really supporting families to come and meet and greet or just have conversation with a board member or two, so. Kind of thinking about what are things that we could do that helps build capacity in parent and family leaders to bring information out from the board by having those engagement opportunities where we actually have conversations um, as well as other groups as we, as we think about that. So it gets me wondering about um, just things to bring up if the board retreat isn't totally packed in terms of agenda, I don't know where planning is for that yet. Um, that that might be a conversation for us to bring there. Thank you.
Thanks Shawna. Go ahead, Sammy.
Well, thank you, Chair. I would like to uh, I'll try to be brief because I have a very long statement and it will be just brutal to keep staff uh, after nine and it's already over after nine. So I'm going to share recommendations for myself to read or reread some uh, summer readings and I want to share it with uh, the community and my fellow board members. So just for the record, those are for you to borrow and then let's meet up over coffee. Uh, so we can circulate it. Uh, and I'll, then I will share a little bit of reflection of my service and uh, looking forward uh, given the results of the election. Um, but before I start with any of that, thank you for our graduates for working so hard to earn those degrees. It's truly the highlight of the year for me and I'm sure for many uh, of us in the school district to see this highlight and congratulations for my colleagues who got re-elected and for the leadership for your hard work. Uh, the school board is in much better shape because of your diligence and shared responsibility uh, leading this board. So I'm going to start with the first book that I mentioned, Nathan Levinson, Smarter Budgets, Smarter Schools. Uh, it's really guides around how we engage with the community year along and focus on student outcomes uh, when we discuss budgets. And I want to thank the school district staff for recommending that book for us. Uh, speaking of math, I believe this was a book that was assigned to us at a certain year uh, prior to discussing math. Uh, detracking in math programs. Limitless Mind, Learn, Lead, and Live Without Barriers by Joe uh, Bowler. Um, and uh, it was really insightful and uh, eye-opening. I mentioned that um, Mr. Brandon Ferbstein, uh, Ten Feet Tall, Step Into Your Truth and Change Your Freaking Wor- World. I think that's okay to say. Uh, the other one I believe was also a summer reading for us uh, last year. Uh, Emergent Strategy, Shaping Change, Changing World by Adrian Marie Brown. And another one which is uh, Dare to Lead, I believe this was also a signed reading for us uh, some previous summer by Brené Brown. She have uh, multiple books on vulnerability and leading with vulnerability and actually getting what vulnerability means. And last, absolutely not least, and I had permission from the author that I'm going to brag about this book for a little bit. Uh, as we engage with parents and support parents and understand how we can uh, create compassionate kids. I recommend Creating Compassionate Kids, Essential Conversations to Have With Young Children by our own Dr. Shawna Tominy. Uh, so I recommend this book, I appreciate uh, Shawna uh, early on, she gifted me this book and it's been very insightful for me uh, to build empathy and understanding and it has really helped me a lot. Um, and I'm going to say I was holding the Constitution while I was saying that oath of office, I take it seriously and I believe it's an important reading for us for obvious reasons, the republic stands on us, on the checks and balances. And when, on a, on a really somber note, when I see a state senator who was a former attorney general um, being attacked physically uh, while he was conducting his duties uh, holding um, the federal government accountable uh, earlier today, it's really, gives me a wake-up call, I, I I did not want to stay in Bahrain when I saw civil disobedience being uh, uh, threatened with violence, when violence was the name of the conversation. I, I do have hope in our country, in our community, that we're going to be civil in how we hold each other accountable and uphold our constitutional republic, our checks and balances. And our public institutions from school employees to librarians, school board members and all those who serve the community, we hold them accountable and the, the public who wants to protest uh, they have to, they have to have the right to do that civilly. And I believe that's an important reflection and reading for us to know our own rights and understand it. Now I'll try to conclude uh, very briefly and if the Chair allows, uh, I would like to maybe submit that as a comment for the record. I have two reflections, a decade of service to Corvallis schools from twenty fifteen to sixteen as a budget committee member and uh, twenty seventeen to present. I'm just going to highlight my appreciation and gratitude over the last ten years, how we built safer and modern schools by passing uh, bond measure success, capital projects delivered seismic safety and sustainability. How we centered equity in education with equity policy implementation and inclusive curriculum and belonging. How we focused on the whole child, whole community and invested in universal free meals, mental health supports and no-cost participation in sports and extracurricular programs. We've done a lot in the past ten years. The academic achievements and opportunity, we raised the graduation rates district-wide, rose from eighty-two in twenty fifteen sixteen to eighty-seven percent, outpacing state's average by five to six percentages. Uh, reducing the disparities, uh, increasing students uh, with disabilities graduation rates uh, to eighty-two percent. And former English language learners exceeding ninety-five percent. Access to rigorous learning opportunities, early learning expansion and response, also we have worked on responsible budgets and financial stewardship, sound fiscal management, preparedness for uncertainty uh, by protecting our reserves and transparent budgeting. And uh, we have uplifted student voice and public engagements where student inclusion has been strengthened through school board participation for our students as advisors, community trusts. Bridging local and national advocacy, thanks to my colleagues uh, for their support and their participation in this work. And state and national leadership for equity through OSBA Caucus of Color, National School Board Association. This decade-long journey has been more than public service, it has been a partnership with a community committed to building a better future for every student's. This works continued, continues. And I wrote this before knowing what's the election results gonna be. But I added, I'm proud and grateful to be part of it and of what we achieved together. It is important for us to reflect on where we are and the challenges that we have navigated over the years. And as we go, I want to forward, I want to really thank the community, the Corvallis community for their trust. I'm grateful for trusting me for another term to serve our community. I take this fourth oath of office with a sense of gratitude. It's, this victory ensures that I can continue to serve children of Corvallis and retain the roles that I do alongside of my colleague Louie White Bear uh, on Oregon School Board Association, on National School Board Association. And the way I see it stands uh, as a testament from the community wi- of their unwavering confidence of the Corvallis voters and the imperative of saving. in them imperative of safeguarding and enhancing public schools. Now, I want to share an important reflection here. I feel privileged of the opportunity that I had an advantage of having oversized voice during the election cycle because it was a contested cycle. So my voice and my vision was more likely to be heard and shared more than my colleagues who were running but uncontested and also more than my colleagues who have been serving in their midterm. And as I continue this work, I want to center the work of the school board as a work of team of seven uh board members. And the vision is a shared vision. And I'm grateful for the opportunity that I was able to share my own perspective, personal experience. It's been very important for the community to uh hear that, to make their decision on voting. After election day, I can, I returned to a school board of seven board members I'm so grateful to work with. And with that, uh um Chair, I ask for your permission if I can submit the uh the a letter to the record and I really apologize. It took more than the five minutes I was hoping for.
Thanks, Sammy. Sure. Um, that's fine. I think, yeah. Um, any other board member comments? You haven't gone Therese, did you?
No, I just wanna say I'm really grateful that the school year has uh ended on a high note. Um, and wanna particularly say how much I appreciated the work of Linus Pauling staff to make the promotion ceremony tonight a very special thing. Uh, I was able to attend Garfield's um fifth grade graduation earlier today as well. I really appreciate that we value those benchmarks in our district and that we encourage kids to have something to look forward to and watching, the younger kids watching the fifth graders today was like, oh, I could see on their faces, oh, that's gonna be me someday, soon actually. Um, it was very special to see so many of the dual immersion kids walk across the stage and remember them from kindergarten. And so um I uh, I know that our enrollment is lower than it was but I also know that we are keeping some families in this district because I watched their kids uh not know how to read and then I watched them tonight walk across and get their rec- their cer- their certificate of recognition. So congratulations to all the eighth graders and all the parents who made it on those not very comfortable bleacher benches um for the whole time and all the parents that set up and are chaperoning and that are going to clean up because I am not any of them. So really grateful for them. Um, yeah, I just really, it was just a really special experience to get to see so much gratitude from the staff toward the kiddos and the kiddos to the, to the teachers. There's a lot of love going both directions in our school buildings. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Therese. Um, I had, everybody had their combos, yeah, they had their comments. Um, I wanted to go back to the comments about the PTA involvement and Shawna's um comment about the quarterly meetings. We really wanna hear from PTAs what they, how they would like to see engagement as well. Um, as mentioned, we need to be invited to things and we've expressed that a few times, like to staff, student groups um and PTAs and PTOs. So if people are interested in having us, they would need to get ahold of Kim to help coordinate that so we don't end up in a quorum situation. Um, but we do want to try to figure out a way for us to not just only be in the meetings, so these conversations and um, the other one that I would like to see happen next year that I wanted to chat with the board about is continuing to have community conversations. And so we had one on the budget, which I think was incredibly needed and important. And um I would like to see a couple next year if we have enough time and capacity and folk are interested. Um, specifically one about math and specifically one about arts and music and um performance arts too. Um, those are conversations that um have been coming up over the last couple of years and I would love to see more engagement around that from us as a board. So those are some ideas to float by you all. Okay, cool. Um, we can figure this out, how we're gonna do it. So I just wanna make sure the community heard us say it because they've heard us talk about that and like some of us anyways in little small conversations. Um, but it's more of that committed to engage in the work that lies ahead. And we need to um do that with community and community, not just in the boardroom. Um, I see you want us to assign a reading this summer. Is that what I heard you ask for the board? I have a.
Unless district staff will have more assignment for us, so I have suggested assign the reading.
I picked out the last assigned reading and it was Emergent Strategy. And um there's plenty, I think that the co vice chairs can chat with Ryan um and Melissa on a reading if y'all are maybe if you have time to read the whole book, but did you have a suggestion? Oh, I thought you were. Okay, yeah. Um, we're committed to continuing to learn as well as a board is basically what we're saying with these readings. Um, and uh Sammy, thanks for bringing up the, bringing the constitution in. I use it in my classes in my native studies classes, just so people know what classes they are. And um it's always surprising when people, when I ask them when the last time they read it was or if they've ever read the whole thing or if they read the Declaration of Independence and they're very engaging conversations in a native studies class because they didn't apply to native people at the times they were written. Um, and um, so I appreciate you bringing that up as for the community to remember to take a look at the values that um society has committed to um in those documents, so. And I will say one more thing about serving on the board. Um, is I wasn't sure what I was getting into when I first applied for appointment and um whether or not I would run for a second term. I knew I had to run for the, to serve a full term. And it, um, I just wanted to say thank you for the community for showing up for um us and continuing to show up and um, I view it as an honor to be able to serve the community and have your trust in this way. Um, and to bring your voices here when you reach out to us, we ask questions um that are based on a lot of the things that we have in individual conversations. And so I just wanna say thank you to the community for continuing to trust, um to trust me and to the um the co vice chairs. So thank you for your leadership and your work too. I'm sitting here on the mic and running the meeting, but they do a lot of the work behind the scenes too. And especially stepping in when um they need to um for me at uh foundation meetings or I'm replying to emails. So I wanted to say thank you to you all too. And um I wanna say thank you to you all for your trust and confidence in me as a board chair for an uh third year. So thank you for that as well. And I know that we have some tough conversations um ahead next year and I'm really um committed to engaging in conversation with the community around um what those will entail and welcome your feedback along the way. Um, and with that, I wanted to say I hope everybody has a good summer. We will be meeting again in August. I hope everybody gets some rest. You can still reach the board um if you would like uh over the summer and we will respond. Um, and with that, the, and no further business, the meeting was actually scheduled till nine thirty-five, so we're good. So it's, it's nine twenty, it's nine twenty-five. All right. Have a good night, everyone. Meetings adjourn.